Is that going to be joining us?
He was here.
I'm not certain if he is or not.
You were speaking before you came in.
I think that's in a past life, you know.
Exactly.
I don't know, he was very upset. Remember I talked to him today.
You are on the record.
All right, we're on the record and it's two o'clock, let's get rolling. I will now call this planning commission meeting to order for Tuesday, June the third at 2:00 P.M. Stephanie, why don't we do roll call?
Commissioner Byers?
Here.
Commissioner Hall?
Here.
Commissioner McLean?
Here.
Commissioner Richardson?
Here.
Commissioner Riggsby?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Also present is Alex, Stephanie, and Britta for the Community Development Department. You do have a quorum.
Great, awesome. At this time, we'll ask if there's any conflicts of interest that need to be declared.
None.
Seeing none, hearing none, we'll move to the next one. Thanks Ron. Certification of compliance with Resolution 2025-01, Stephanie?
I do certify that the meeting was posted in accordance with Resolution 2025-01 and 5440 of the municipal code.
Great, thank you. Number three, approval of agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda for Tuesday, June 3rd, 2025.
Second.
Got a motion, second, any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Commissioner Byers?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner McLean?
Aye.
Commissioner Richardson?
Aye.
Commissioner Riggsby?
Aye.
Sorry. Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Excellent. We have an agenda, the next thing would be approval of minutes from our last meeting on May 6th, 2025. Any changes or amendments to the minutes that were provided ahead of time?
No, I saw none make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the regular meeting of May 6th, 2025.
Second. Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All right, let's move to a vote.
Commissioner Byers?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner McLean?
I'll abstain.
Commissioner Richardson?
Aye.
Commissioner Riggsby?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Sweet. Next item, our public input. This is an opportunity for those in the public to bring anything to this commission's attention that we need to address, any concerns or any other public input. We will have a public hearing for the ordinance a little bit later. I'm assuming you all are here for that comment. But at this time, if there's any other comments that you would like to make that are not related to the public hearing that we're having later, I'll open it up. Seeing none, we'll close public input and move directly into what we have next, which is our public hearing. No quasi judicial meeting or quasi judicial hearings today, but we're just going to discuss ordinances. So, let's go to number six. Alex, will you tell us what we're looking at today?
Certainly, so there is a ordinance proposed that would amend the Chapter 54 regarding development standards, architectural design standards, more or less in regard to the use of metal as an exterior building material. This is the result of a work over the last few months by a subcommittee of the commission. And the ordinance is laid out starting on page nine of the packet. And with that, we would be willing to go through that if you'd like to go through it, or if you, how would you like to discuss this ordinance?
Yeah, why don't you, why don't we go through it? Not the definitions unless there are questions about that, but why don't you just tell us a little bit about the spirit and then what the committee discussed and changes?
Can do. So, going to the ordinance, the current standard allows for the planning administrator, which would largely be the staff of the Community Development Department, may approve a metal siding on any structures provided that it's found that the siding is characteristic of the area. And so that left a lot of discretion and a lot to be desired as now that we're probably going to be getting more and more requests for buildings that are constructed with metal as the, as an exterior material on there. So what the intention was, was to give some more concrete direction as to this will be approved so that there is not, as these folks might talk about, continual back and forth between either a builder or a homeowner or a property owner as to what may be acceptable, what's not acceptable in that. So what this will change up, we've changed the order of some things in here as well in talking amongst ourselves and also with the village attorney to try to make some more clarity in how this is written up. The first change would be to move that the prohibition on V rib and corrugated siding to the first, the first thing under the metal siding on there to say that is clearly prohibited in there. And then number three would be to say that the planning administrator may approve exposed metal siding on structures when it meets the following requirements. The first would be on manufactured homes as allowed under the code, the general code, Chapter 54. And then letter B, that metal siding must be a gauge of 26 or greater. So that gives the quality standard that is necessary to be, to be found, to be approvable. And then the last part would be to establish a ratio that would say that up to 60% of any exterior wall, so whether it's a four or a 14 sided building, just making up 14, but any exterior wall would need to be, so it's not, way it's currently proposed, it would not just be for a front or a street facing or a public facing facade, for any exterior facade must be up to, maybe up to 60% metal printed to resemble wood or stone or colored enamel. And then the remaining 40% would be other materials such as rock, stucco, wood, or cementous siding or brick. And so that is the proposed ordinance.
Okay. Thank you for the overview. Why don't we get our public comments and then we can get questions if that works for you? We'll go ahead and open it up. The gentleman, there's just you three gentlemen. So if you have comments, if you want to provide your input, y'all are experts in the space based off the last presentation you've done to, done for us. So we'll open it up for comments.
I just want to say-
Before you start your testimony, if you be sworn in and state your name for the record.
Yes.
I, Wendell Boss, we promise to tell the truth.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Just say your name. It's not a judicial hearing, so that's all good. Yes, sir.
I want to thank Alex and Stephanie for getting this done. Whenever he said we'd spend a lot of time, I know it's taken a lot of time for them and we've kind of been in the dark and I appreciate the opportunity to come and see if we can work out something that is beneficial to all of the residents of Lincoln County. So, and Alex has been very good to work with and Stephanie too, so it's just, I appreciate that. And then I'd like for Gabe, our manager, he's been at this 20 years. He's much more versed than I am and can give you a lot more information. And we do have some comments that we'd like to make, so if you-
Yeah, certainly, yeah. And then if you'll just state your name.
Yeah, Gabe Goodwin.
Thanks.
And like Wendell said, I was here at the last presentation. Appreciate all the work Alex and Stephanie have done. You know, our main thing is we want something that the village can adopt that will be beneficial, you know, in the long run, Class A fire rated materials, you know, that are hardwalled, but we can still keep with the aesthetic of what Riddos wants. And so, you know, in the last several months, we've had a lot of new products that we have, you know, started to get into our inventory that we're able to manufacture. So we have wood grain siding, we showed you pictures in the last presentation. We have steel log siding, a lot of different options. And so that's what we want to bring to the table, you know, for consideration in the ordinance changes. And so, you know, that's what we're looking for. And so, you know, I have a couple suggestions, I don't know if you want me to make those now?
Now would be the time, if there's any comments.
You know, my thing is, just to clarify some of this, I pulled the agenda last night. Everything we do will be 26 gauge or greater. That's what we've always prided ourselves in, we don't do any 29 gauge stuff, the thin metal, things like that. So it would be, you know, the ratio, mixed ratios, you know, typically I like to think of the rule of thirds. So I've been in the business 17 years doing barnominiums, things all over, you know, the Southwest. And, you know, we typically do a rule of thirds, so I don't know if that's something that we could look at, you know, 70/30 rule or a third of the facade, you know, the facing needs to be that. Because we're going to run into issues, we might have a 24 foot wall, you know, but then they've got a broken up porch or a deck, you know, that, okay, we'd have a three foot rock wainscote, but on the 24 foot wall, do we have to have an eight foot or we continue that? So I don't know if it's something that needs to be tightened up in the, you know, verbiage of the new change, but that might be something with the committee to discuss. And then the other thing, you know, are we allowed to do a metal material for the wainscote that looks like rock? You know, so you have a standard enameled metal above, but we have a wood or rock looking or the steel log for the wainscote on the bottom. We're actually having our new office and shop being delivered tomorrow in Gavillon Canyon. And that's what we have planned is to do the steel log siding for the wainscote and then wood looking steel above. Once you get 10 foot away from the building, you'll never know that that's an all steel building. And so that's just some of the things that I, that kind of popped out, you know, that I thought might be a little discussion.
Yeah.
And then the enamel?
And the enamel, which I think on the other side of this kind of means opaque glossy, this says glassy, glossy opaque substance fused to metals protective coating. So that would just be something which is our standard colors. We just want directions so when we have customers coming to us and reaching out, what are our options that we know which direction to point them in?
Yeah, I appreciate that and I appreciate your comments. Any others, would you, any comments from you?
I don't know.
Okay. Sounds good, any, usually we would then go, so we take your comment and then we go into discussion as a committee. So since it's just the three of you, it kind of looks a little bit different, but we'll go into discussion and if we need your expertise or any feedback from you all, we'll ask that. But generally, at this point in time, we as a committee would discuss the ordinance. I think the two changes that you would recommend, we will discuss the ratio and then the other material. Is it a look thing, is it a material thing, I think would be your questions, so. Great, I appreciate your comments. Let's move to, if there are no other public comments, we'll close the public comments and move to commission discussion on this item. I'd love to hear from those that were on the subcommittee, I think you guys met two or three times, is that, twice? Would love to hear kind of the discussion, some of the discussions that you think would be pertinent to this and how we arrived at these ratios and all that.
Chairman Riggsby, would you mind if I made one last comment before? On this item, the only other language that staff would also recommend is due to the state pushing an insurance component on this, there may be language that may be necessary to say, "or as specified by state insurance requirements." They are looking at 100% metal buildings and for insurance of one of their programs. So if someone is in that program, they may be required to work within those constraints, so just as an FYI.
Are they looking at 100% metal or fire rating is the determination?
My understanding is that it's a combination of the two, but the metal is 100% metal facade.
Okay. So even if it's a cement siding that's level five fire rated, I don't know if that's a thing?
I'm sorry, if it's a metal building, they may say 100% metal. The rules and regulations to come out still aren't anywhere near complete. We're just being told that that may be some of the language that's being considered. So we can add it and take it out as necessary, but just so that you all are aware as a commission, we want to make sure that that information was given to you.
Okay.
I think where we came up with the 40% was, I'll just say there's a wainscoting on the building. It was also maybe column wraps as well, other things that would accumulate up, you know, at the 40% total. And I mean, we wouldn't have to have an eight foot wall, eight foot bunch on a 24 foot wall, that's not the, that was not it. It was, it was more of just having 40% total coverage, whether it was wainscoting or whatever it was. We didn't really talk a whole lot about the different metal siding, it looked like wood or whatever. I don't believe we did, did we, Bill, we were just saying 40%?
It's not the look of the siding, it's the, it's the materials.
Exactly.
It's the, that's why the ratio was, we came up with, because part of, part of it too-
I'm sorry, Bill, can you turn your microphone closer?
Oh.
Come on, Bill.
Turn it on.
First time, first time.
First time, yeah. No, part of it, it was a material thing, it wasn't a look thing, the look wasn't important. The material thing, and that kind of came out of basically just kind of what the character of the village looks like now. You drive through midtown or through the center of town, what do you see? You see stone buildings, you see stucco buildings, you see wood buildings and occasionally a metal building. And what we did not want to lose is that character. And like I said, so you can have a combination, that's where we came to a percentage is the easiest way to figure that out. Because that's the nature of everything, you go through the neighborhoods that you've got here, they're built out of many different things. There are some people that are all metal, like 1950's trailers that are in a few neighborhoods. But for the, what we were looking for was not to totally destroy the character. Now, if the insurance regulations destroy the character where you've got to do that, we'll probably have a problem with that from that standpoint. But that's another battle for another time.
Yeah. We could incorporate shutters as well, what are, you know, fake shutters beside the windows, whatever it is to add up to 40%. It's not like it works as-
And for you all that were on the committee, the language specifically says any exterior wall. Were you all thinking of it like an actual this wall and not the total exterior square footage of a building? Because you brought up column wraps, you brought up shutters.
Yes.
Not just the actual wall, but the full exterior square footage?
Trying, I think what we're trying to achieve is just to make sure we don't have a bunch of barns sitting in the middle of Riddos.
Yeah.
That's, that's what we're trying to achieve.
Yeah.
Don't, I mean, I'm from Texas, I get it, we have barn dominions all over the place, but we don't really want it to look like Texas here, most of us are Texans, but we don't want it to look like Texas. So trying to kind of get, keep the mountainy feel to it.
Well, and that was, and that was the other thing too, was not, you know, to get away from, oh, you just do the facade. You want, you want the neighbor behind you not to be looking at-
A metal building.
A metal building.
Exactly. It looks like a warehouse district.
Yeah, it looked like a warehouse district. You didn't want that for your neighbors to be able to see that.
But I guess, but we could always accommodate for the metal building. I mean, that's what we're looking for is some insurance at this point, because no one-
Only if the insurance piece comes back that way, yes, sir.
And that's, we're all looking for cheaper insurance at this point because we can't get it. Or any insurance. Yeah, any insurance at this point, yeah, exactly.
Can I ask, is the reason for the two thirds, one third split because of the standard widths that the metal comes in? Is that the problem or were we coming up with that as a, it sounds like a cost problem change?
There is a cost issue with that and we've got a project here in Riddos, so it's kind of the same thing. You know, the one third is kind of your typical architectural art photography, that's your, you know, basis of splitting anything up. And so it's a little more, so when I do barnominiums with wainscoats, stuff like that, it's typically a three foot on, you know, a nine foot wall. And so that's, it's been shown to be more aesthetically pleasing. When it comes into a cost deal, it's when you're having to do every wall. So if you have a barnominium that is got mountain on the backside with nobody seeing it, you know, but it costs $10,000 to add rock to one wall, you know, can we have a variance or some direction to, okay, we need to do that, you know, on the street facing side? You know, or if there are neighbors, you know, things like that. So that's the thing, we just want to know the direction. But typically when I do a barnominium or a steel home, you know, we typically do a three, three and a half foot wainscote, that's the industry standard for exterior wainscoats. You know, we can do full walls, we can do whatever. He lived in, he had a barnominium in Lubbock that, you know, required full brick on three sides and you could have one side that was, you know, metal. And so there's just a lot of different ways to do it. But the one third is typically kind of a, you know, in the art world and the photography world and aesthetics, you know, it's kind of typical ratio, you know, that we've seen, that we work with.
Does that answer your question, Victory?
Yeah.
He has an art degree from Kansas State, so-
From where?
Yeah, it's whenever you see-
Kansas State.
You never see it in the middle, you never see it at the bottom, it's always somewhere in that third section. That's just human nature.
Yeah.
To see things in thirds. Split in half doesn't work, it's just an aesthetic thing more than anything. And the three to four foot on wainscoting, because I do the rock work, some people like it a little higher because they like it to carve up underneath the windows. Some people like it right at the bottom of their windows. Again, it's an aesthetic thing, but three to four feet is typically the most aesthetically pleasing height for a skirting wall.
I think when we get this, when we start asking for variances and all that stuff, then you're going to start taxing our department here and then it's going to come before us just in variances constantly for, whether it's a front or a back or a side. I think we have to keep that standard, a standard and say this is what it has to be, you know, cost effective or not, that's what it has to be because at some point Steph and Alex are going to be overloaded and it comes before us and then we're just stuck with all these cases.
I agree. I, and part of the question that I had about any exterior wall versus exterior square footage, to the point that the gentleman were making, I could get to set, like say, I could get to the 60% metal, 40% other material on my house and I back up to a mountain, I think is the point that they were making.
Right.
So I think we need to be very clear, it's like 60% total exterior square footage or if it's per wall, if it's easier. So I guess that's a question for staff, if it's easier to go wall by wall in neighborhoods? Is it easier to get one calculation from contractors?
I think though, if you say, if it's just front facing walls, if they have a neighbor behind them, then the neighbor gets to look at a metal building.
Right, right.
So, you know, you can't really say it's just front facing walls because that would be a case by case again and the neighbor behind them looking at a warehouse. So you-
And if I may, during our meetings, we did discuss that quite lengthily as well. So we do have quite a few undeveloped lots. So just at this time, they may be asking for one and to make an exception for this property. But in the future, they go and get a neighbor that finally develops, now they, you know, the character is still gone. So it was easier for us to bring forward the recommendations as in all or nothing, kind of.
And Chairman Riggsby and members of the commission, there are multiple communities that do what they call public facing and in facades, and so it actually solves the problem of your neighbor. So if you're rear facing or if you do have a neighbor behind you, it's still considered public facing. They did it a lot in business districts when they started redoing Santa Fe, when they started redoing Albuquerque. There's places in Arizona and California that do the same thing. The facade component is keeping the character of the, of the community, but the inside, the interior, the exterior and the back half that doesn't, isn't public facing, it's from a cost perspective. So how do we get more, you know, modern, efficient builds with that facade facing component, still provide cost and insurance, but keep the character of the community? So those are things to also consider as those move forward. So it may be your 60% or your 40/60 of public facing areas. So that way you may have two facing walls, three facing walls, it's just dependent on what is there. But anything that would come to staff, they'd be able to quickly tell, no, this is surrounded by all four sides of a public facing area. It would require all of that. Or this actually backs up to a mountain, so, and it's a corner lot, you only require two sides that are 40/60. Whatever the case may be, those are things that can also be evaluated.
How do you define public facing? Because you now got a lot, okay, I'm building a house in a lot and I got a lot here, a lot here, a lot here, a lot here in the street.
That would be a mission for the commission.
That's four, that's four sides, that's four public facing sides.
Yeah, but if I back up to National Forest land-
Now, if this was National Forest, I could see-
Or State Trust land or-
So that's why that definition of how are you defining public facing? Because this guy's here building a lot and here building a lot, but here's where the street is and this is your public facing and the back is public facing, say another wire or street. How do, you know, you're, you're taking these two people here, are they defined as public facing?
And Chairman Riggsby, Commissioner Hall, I think that, that definition can really be kicked around, but ultimately I think the best practice is anything that faces the public, right? So whether it's a street, a neighbor, or a business, that is considered public facing. There's significant numbers of properties that face either National Forest or State Forest or that face dead end areas in the community. Those are not necessarily public facing. We could definitely tweak a definition that we would be able to provide to the commission for approval, but it's, high level, it's, if it's not facing somebody or something, then it's not considered public facing.
Yeah, and I'd get that, I wouldn't have a problem with that. I mean, like I said, if it's a backup to the forest, forest, you know, it's-
I think the, I think the thing that we need to make sure we're good on as a commission though is consistency and enforceability. I think about a number of our commercial buildings in town that look and feel great when you're facing them from the front, but then if you're on the backside of them, they're, they're a steel building that is facing potentially into a residential neighborhood.
Most of them are.
I mean, there's three that I can think of off the top of my head that are just along Meacham, so, or Sudeth. So I think that's fair and it sounds like the committee, you guys discussed this at length and that's why you say any wall needs to have the ratio as stated, right? Is that what you guys were going with it?
Any public facing wall?
Would you, would you be okay adding any public?
As long as you define the public as we talked about before, a neighbor lot.
Exterior wall.
Public exterior wall.
As long as it doesn't become an issue with staff having to-
We will, yes, try to define it fairly as tight as, as narrow or as broadly as the, yeah, as necessary in that, but this moves us forward from, from where we are, so we can, we can work with that.
I think if you have undeveloped lots or lots around a property, it's pretty easy to look it up on the map and go, well, there's lots all around it or street all around it, so every side has to be-
It's potential, yeah.
Has to be, even if it's not developed, but if the back ends like say to the forest, like there's plenty of places like in Upper Canyon that back up to the forest that-
Right.
There's not going to be, that's not an issue there, but it would be an issue like in Ponderosa Heights, so.
And Chairman Riggsby and members of the committee, the only other challenge I think you would have with something like that that says public facing would be a distance requirement. So if someone is, for example, on 20 acres or 10 acres or if they're in a quarter acre lot, those are the kinds of discussions where someone may come in and say, "I need a variance because my neighbor can't see me." That is where I think you'll see a challenge and a discussion that probably has to come up.
Yeah, go ahead, Bart.
We frequently have cut situations where the backside is basically like Sierra Mall over here. You've got 25 feet or so from the back of it and it's 16 feet or higher to the top of the retaining wall. Nobody, even the neighbors can't see it because of the, anyways. And they did put up metal siding and I don't think they ever got a, you know, variance or whatever, but they, I don't blame them. It was all stucco originally and it should have been metal. Anyways, that was just a case in point. You have a lot of that kind of stuff in a mountainous community where you have cuts, even though the backside of it may be residential. And I don't, I don't have a problem with that when you can't really see it because it is 16 feet down, anyways.
Yeah, I think that that's fair. I think adding the public exterior wall gives, if, if we're all good with it, a little bit flexibility for that, that we, that there's some discretion there. What about the ratios? I know that you all said there's six- I know that you all said seven, there's sixty, forty.
I'm good with the sixty, forty.
Good with sixty, forty?
Yeah, we talked about it. If you had a ten-foot wall and you put a four-foot wainscoting, that's got you covered.
Yeah, yeah.
And like the man said, you know, some people wanted it up, passed up the bottom of the window and, you know.
Now, I do have one issue that I'm not good with. It says right here, all V-ribbed and corrugated sightings, uh, shall be prohibited. Um, a- and I don't think that all of them should be prohibited. Uh, the galvanized, if that's what you're after, I'm good with that. But the rusted corrugated metal looks good. I've seen it in, uh, you know, in, in many uses up, and, and I hate to compare it to Colorado and stuff like that, but I've seen a lot of good looking places use it. And, uh, I don't think you should just blanket, you know, say corrugated metal is not allowed. Uh, I think there should be, you know, I don't want to see a painted corrugated metal. I don't really necessarily want to see the galvanized, but, uh, although I've seen it in cases where it looks good, used sparingly. Here again, it's, uh, what are we really after?
Yeah.
You know?
Do you have a comment there?
Uh, yes, sir, Chairman Riggsby, members of the commission. So, um, just as an example, uh, there was a, a location, um, I was at a tournament over Memorial Day weekend with the kids and we went to a facility called Soho. Um, it's like an, it's like a backyard concept. It was corrugated fencing that was painted orange. Um, it was a, uh, container facility, for lack of a better word, for three quarters of the way. One quarter of the frontage was actually a restaurant facing, uh, facility with stucco. But the rest of it was either container, um, facility or corrugated metal fencing. And, I mean, it was one of those things that you were sitting there going, this is a, this is, this looks like a neat park facility. So I think as, as the village looks, um, to, one, um, obviously you all did chapter fifty-four, but two, um, as there's amendments or discussions with new businesses or business development that comes into the community, I think that's a consideration to look at the difference between business and residential. Um, but I also believe that there could be a discussion on the residential side as well. We have people that want to put up fences all the time, corrugated metal that may be stamped or that may be in some other way, shape or form of design that may not be perceived as corrugated. Not saying that those are things that we shouldn't deny. I'm just saying that those discussions, and, and I apologize, I wasn't able to make the committee meetings, so I wasn't sure what the discussion was on that. But I do think that those are things from a staff perspective, we know we're gonna start getting already, and so we know those items will be coming to commission probably within the next six months to a year. So just as a discussion point for you all.
Maybe the committee can talk about why that.
We, a lot of times we were, while we were discussing that, this corrugated metal that you get nowadays, most people buy at Home Depot or somewhere. It's very, very thin gage stuff. It's very flimsy, it's just trash.
Yeah.
Uh, we didn't want to look like a bunch of chicken coops in the backyard or.
Not a good.
Whatever. So that, that's where the corrugated metal, that's where we came up with that, just more of an horror panel or something else designed that someone just couldn't run down here to Foxworth and grab three or four sheets of this cheap stuff, slap it on there and it ends up in their neighbor's backyard or cuts their neighbor's head off or something as it flies by, you know? So.
Yeah, there was more opportunities to not get correct, um, gaged material to meet the building code requirements for siding.
With the twenty-six or greater, do you think it covers that or no? You, you think that it's still necessary to have it banned, in your opinion, Stephanie?
Yeah.
I hope we could ask the men. Typical, can you get a twenty-six gauge corrugated barn tin?
We can do twenty-six, twenty-four, twenty-two, up to eighteen gauge and a corrugated. So when I, when I look at corrugated, that is the wavy type. I sell three different wavy types. We don't make it in-house, but I order it in. Um, I can get that in like an old rusted look like you were talking about. Um, you know, it's actually painted to look like it's old barn tin. Those are, can be used, very aesthetically pleasing. So that's the only thing with, uh, section two there. All types, I don't know if you would fully prohibit it, you know? Or section three would, you know, specify, okay, maybe we can if it's twenty-six gauge or greater.
Yeah.
Because what you are gonna get at Foxworth or Lowe's or Home Depot is your thirty-two gauge, twenty-nine gauge, at the most corrugated.
I think you should, uh, change your verbiage instead of, uh, greater to heavier because, uh, you know, the, the layperson.
Twenty-nine is greater?
Yeah. They don't understand that gauges actually get thicker as it goes down.
Yeah.
So heavier.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As opposed to greater.
That's a good point.
No one wants to buy.
You can even put a minimum thickness of point oh-one eight-five. I mean, you can get, we can get. Oh, that'll really fill them off.
Something of that nature, but when you just say greater, the, there's people out there that are gonna go, whoa, thirty's greater than.
Yeah, it's like a third pound hamburger compared to a quarter pound. Everybody buys a quarter pound because they think it's greater.
And Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, I would be very cautious in working with aesthetics versus building material quality. Um, I think one, we're very clearly eligible to regulate. Um, the other, I think we're more than able to regulate. It's just that there could be challenges on building materials. So that's the only thing that we would walk a line on. And again, specifically related to fire, um, uh, requirements is where I'm coming from. I, on the aesthetic side, we can really work whatever we need to, but I think it's gonna be that fire rating. I think it's gonna be, um, the insurance component. Those are, those are the things I think that are gonna be challenges. I know you can wait for that till they come out, but I still think the discussion is pertinent, so.
Well, and that's, that's where we got this, this start, was how do we provide our residents the most options for the best fire rating for insurance? Banning metal as a siding does not help with that, um, because then you're just limited to stucco and cement, um, when it might be a better look, feel, cost for metal. So, so I guess what you're saying, Michael, is that this line two, all V-ribbed and corrugated siding types shall be prohibited. We might not need that because we're gonna do it off of the gauge of the siding?
I would, I would honestly look at best practices, see what best building materials are and have that discussion, um, as a commission. I, I think you've heard from these gentlemen that possibly a certain gauge, um, is what you're looking at. Um, again, to your all's point, you don't want to be able to run down to Lowe's or Foxworth and grab something that just slap on the side and, and have us look like chicken coops or, or something that, that is not aesthetically pleasing. But I do think if it's a, if it's a building material that you all are comfortable with aesthetically, um, and it's a quality building material, I would at least consider that. So yes, I would reword the language on that line.
Yes, sir.
We, we offer a, a fire rating and from California, and we also offer a, hey, uh, for your hardness. And you, I don't know if you want to consider putting those in there, but with any, which is quality, whenever you put those requirements in, uh, you, you can't go to Foxworth and get a, a piece of metal that's got a, you can take your insurance company and because of the hardness, get a, get a discount on your insurance and stuff. I don't know.
Did you guys discuss that as a committee? Like the grade of material rather than the, the bend in the metal? We discussed, uh, the gauge.
I did, we asked the building department and the building department referenced back to the building code and neither of those were clarified. So instead of putting something in there that may not be attainable, um, and to a standard other than the twenty-six gauge, which is required by the building code, um, we were advised not to add additional requirements.
Okay. That sounds good then. Does that work for y'all? So, Michael, I'm gonna ask, are you just saying strikeout line two? Is that what your recommendation is? The all V-ribbed and corrugated? And then it's up to discretion to ensure that it's the right gauge of material?
If, if the commission is comfortable with the aesthetics component, I would suggest moving to a building standard versus just the corrugated look. Yes, sir. I would strike that out.
What are your thoughts? Annie?
Are you guys okay with the aesthetic, aesthetic?
That's a mouthful, ain't it?
Yeah.
You know, with some of this, get an architect, uh, because not everybody's taste is, uh, you know?
Right.
So some of it require an architect, uh, if it, uh, is questionable. Because it, if done right, it's like what Michael was saying, uh, if done right, it, some of that stuff is like, wow, this is cool, you know? Uh, but when it's done hatchet job, it's like, oh, man, this is garbage.
Our neighbors have to live with it.
You know, it's, we don't want to have as a standard that makes hatchet jobs easier. Yeah, and that I agree. And that's why I say make an architect sign off on it or something. I don't care, but, uh, I, I don't think you should just blanket outlaw certain things versus, uh, you know, it, it's, it needs to be aesthetically pleasing.
Yeah.
And it can be, I think a lot of different products can be aesthetically pleasing. You know, part of my biggest concern and is with Yalz enamel finish, is it gonna have a, uh, a better UV life than the typical, uh, roof that, uh, you know, that's, that oxidizes in, in, uh, just a few years, uh, you know, when you've got that stamped log look or, or rock or whatever it is that you're doing? Is it really gonna hold up for forty years?
How many, forty?
And maintain the same integrity and the.
So the, the paint warranty on all of the material that we manufacture is a forty-year paint warranty, which covers the adhesion, bubbling, peeling, cracking. Um, it is to a certain extent, the chalking is what we call it, the fading. You know, the best part of the metal is putting on a vertical surface versus the roof is gonna be less, uh, than on the roof. Um, and so that's where we've seen a lot of roofs and barnumiums that you might have chalking on the roof, but the walls look brand new, you know, with regular maintenance because you're not getting that direct perpendicular to the sun.
Did I hear with regular maintenance?
With, you know, just regular cycles of rain and keeping it clean, stuff like that, versus a, a, a roof surface that's perpendicular to, you know, sunlight.
Yeah.
You're gonna get a lot more chalking and fading versus a vertical surface. And so that's what a lot of the, the newer products, you know, and especially like our wood grain stuff, um, you know, it's, it's a new product developed by our coil supplier, by the mill that we get our coils from, you know, and, and they've got a electron bean cured top coat that's UV resistant. I mean, it's.
Right, and I understand, and I, I remember when polybutyl was the, the latest and greatest thing and, you know, and, uh, that's, building products come and go and, uh, everybody.
The technology, when you get down to just the paint is, you know, crazy what they have and what's available. And, and so we do a silicon, modified siliconized polyester. There's also a Kynar, Hynar paint systems, you know, there's all different things, but you know, like y'all been saying, the, the functionality and the thickness and, you know, heavy duty longevity is what you want to look for.
I think that's fair. I think my stucco might look bad in forty years if I don't regularly maintain it or get it repainted or refinished, even though I just got it done last year. So I, I think that's the, that's the tough thing. I mean, our logs that are on some of our cabins that have been around since the nineteen forties that have the bark sloughing off, I mean, they don't look that great, in my opinion, but they are.
Yeah, they fit the character.
I guess what, a- a- as I look at it, I guess my concerns when you look at it is, are we setting a standard that limits the availability of vendors? Is there more than just these guys here that can provide this? That's what I, I don't want to set a standard that, oh, it's just these people that can do it. I'm not, I'm not in the mood for any of that. I want competition.
Mueller can do it and, uh, I'm sure that.
Well, that's why I ask.
Well, it sounds like the twenty-six gauge or heavier adheres to building code. So if it's adhering to building code, there has to be more than one supplier.
And twenty-six gauge also will get you a cosmetic, um, discount on your insurance as well. You can, you, you can sign off on that. They won't, they won't replace it if it gets beat by hail or something unless it shows a leak that, that is from the hail, but you can sign off on that. It makes your insurance cheaper as well. So, but it has to be at least twenty-six gauge.
Or heavier.
Or heavier, yes, correct.
That's a change that we have.
Point zero-one five or bigger.
With, yeah, go ahead.
I was wondering, on, uh, on here we had printed to resemble wood or stone. I don't, really, it looks like stone truly. Um, but the, how long does that last? You said on your paints, forty years it's maintained on those kinds of situations because you're really just layering, uh, like a coat of whatever, but plastic with that print on it over the top.
Yeah, so the, the product, and I had it in the presentation last time.
Right.
Um, it's a, it's a printed material. It's a UV treated printed, I mean, decal.
Right.
Wrapped that they put on the galvanized coils. Um, and then it's got the electron bean cured top coat. So it's warranted at the moment, twenty years. They have talked about that that could go up, but they haven't been around for twenty years. And so their initial warranty offering is twenty years on the, what we call a true steel HD. Um, so it's a three-D print, um, and so they do have different stone looks. They have a charred wood look. They have, you know, chippy white, whitewash. And, and right now we're only carrying like a rough cedar and a barn wood plank.
So is that gonna create problems with mortgage companies? If you've only got a twenty-year warranty on the exterior of a building, are banks gonna be willing to finance you for more than twenty years?
I think the metal still stands as strong.
It's just a question I ask. I, I know a number of people who are bankers and they'll look at that type of stuff when they get down to it. You may qualify for a twenty-year mortgage, not a thirty.
And Chairman Riggsby, members of the board, I mean, I just had to have my house repainted for refinancing and they said, hey, your paint's only good for ten, so same thing. It's the elastomeric sun stuff, so that's all I know. All I know is that it didn't last the ten that they said it would because it's only seven years old.
Well, maybe just get out El Paso, that heat down there, Michael.
I am trying to and possibly build a metal house.
Very nice. Fair enough. I, other changes to the, the language, it feels like we need to maybe tighten up the language before we vote on it with the insurance heavier than, and then marking that out. Uh, and then any public exterior wall for the commission. Are we comfortable with voting on this like broad strokes? And then deferring to the staff for the definition of public exterior wall? Or do we want it to come back to us? And do we want to see the insurance standard language?
Uh, Chairman Riggsby, members of the commission, I think we can tighten everything up but the insurance. I don't know when that's coming out. We've heard everything from two months to two years. Um, I'm hoping it happens fairly quickly just because I know they're working up in Mora and in Las Vegas on fire stuff. Um, I think they're trying to get that cleared up before they put any insurance language together. Um, I would like, uh, for staff to work on the other items that you just mentioned and take it back to the committee for discussion and then possibly have that come back to you all, um, for approval.
I think that makes most sense.
Yeah, because I had the other question. We talked about that the metal siding must be a gauge of twenty-six or heavier. And did we want to add the language and class four impact rated?
Yeah, maybe we can get.
I mean, that's.
The twenty-six gauge came from the building department, so why don't we give feedback on the class four language, whether they recommend?
Class four impact.
Does that make sense to? So right now it just says twenty-six gauge or heavier. Does it make sense to add a, a impact class to it or does it not?
David didn't, he, he read me the language and it only showed the twenty-six gauge.
Do y'all. Tell them about twenty-six gauge.
Ste- Stephanie, do y'all have a roofing requirement for class four?
I wasn't asking about roofing.
Well, that's typically where you see it, so I didn't know if you had an existing.
Yeah, we were looking at siding requirements.
Okay. If, if you'll just give, give us some feedback on that when you come back with the rest of the language.
We also have an IFC, um, code component that relates to, uh, metal siding. So I'm gonna have them work with, uh, the fire department as well.
Sounds good.
And come back with, yeah.
Will we have this in July then, the language, so we can make an action and vote on it?
I, I feel, I feel we can, we can do that. That will be our, that will be our goal, yes.
That's my goal as well.
Perfect. Do we have another meeting set up already as the committee?
No, um, I, I had pushed this into council for, um, adoption, but I'll recall that and we'll put it out until August.
Okay. Thank you. Um, do we need a vote to not vote on this or table it or just, we're all good? Okay. Michael shook his head, so I think we're, we've discussed that point and we can move on to our next item, which I think is just our community development.
Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your comments. We closed public hearing. Um, you'll have your opportunity to provide feedback to the committee, so.
Questions, are we going with every wall?
We haven't, we aren't sure what we're going with, cause we didn't vote on anything.
It's going back to committee.
It's going back to the committee to discuss it.
Would you have something else to say?
This was, wait, I was gonna talk about not everything's, uh, the 20, the paint, the warranties, uh, what we do is, is a 20-year warranty, just on some of our other products do have 30 and 40 here. Paint, that same wood, right, that's been around over.
Yeah.
Not 20 across the board.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, for your, uh, unexpected valuable contributions to this discussion. It's good to have an expert in the room.
And.
Let's. You okay, Vicki? Let's move to community development report. Alex, I, I, Stephanie alluded to potentially, uh, show and tell, is that on the schedule or no?
Yes, so I have, um, things set for 603 Meacham between 3:00 to 3:30, depending on how long that, um, took for the public hearing.
We're almost there. So we can, if, so part of the community development report is a tour, if you guys are just. Ron, I know you're at home and we didn't really hear from you on the discussion, but.
Yeah, but we're gonna meet, you guys are gonna meet again, so I didn't say anything.
That's right. Um, what other items from the community development office that we should be aware of?
Uh, let's see here. I think the only, the only thing to bring to, to your awareness is, um, one of the items from, from last month, uh, the, um, 120 Buckingham variance request, um, that will be coming back to you, um, in July. Um, it's an unusual situation. Typically, the way that handles through is they make an appeal of, of that to the council. Uh, this is a situation where, um, I must stipulate that an error was made, um, when discussing the question of whether a carport requires to meet the setback, uh, the information provided, uh, by me was that it did not and it does require a setback. And so that's going to be coming back to you at the July 1st hearing for, um, a new hearing.
Is that Mr. Orr?
That is Mr. Orr, yes.
Okay. Thank you for that update. Any other items that we should be aware of? Any questions for the committee?
I suppose I would, uh, 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 point out that we will be, um, in coordination with the code enforcement division of, um, we will be doing, um, for those properties that have not either cleaned up on their own or taken, uh, advantage of the, uh, program put on by the state for cleanup.
Pretty good.
Uh, that we will. Yeah, that, that we will be, um, doing the clean and lean program with, with those folks that have not, will not be in compliance.
I think you got it cool.
Oh, you fell off, okay. Sorry, Alex.
Yeah, he froze, sorry.
Um, so folks that have not cleaned up will be required to clean up.
Correct, yes. They will be required to clean up and if they, uh, code already has gone out and done an, an, an initial assessment of those, of those properties, um, within the village limits that have not cleaned up, um, we will be going through the required process to let them know that they, um, are subject to the clean and lean if they do not, uh, get their property in compliance, um, with the current, um, plan to bring this forward for, uh, the council consideration to move them to the, into the actual, um, clean and lean program at their meeting in July.
How many estimated properties? Sorry.
The number that, that Bobby had said was probably right now they're looking at about 20 that they've, that they've seen, that they had would, would be considered.
Thank you. Sorry, Michael.
No, 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 we've also, uh, we are streamlining the clean and lean process to roughly, um, get down to 15 days rather than the 40 to 50 days it's been taking.
There's been a new, uh, circumstance arrive at, uh, bottom of Swiss LA hill right there on, uh.
Sorry, been red tagged.
Yeah, red tagged.
But it hadn't, nothing.
It has five days left, I believe.
No, today is, uh, the final day of this 15-day notice. Um, the property is to be cleaned up by today. Um, anything still remaining, code enforcement will be moving forward with enforcement actions.
Is that the construction yard down there that was originally approved as a?
Condos. Last year, yeah.
Yeah, I was wondering.
Multifamily.
I was looking condos, huh?
I was wondering about that, but, okay.
Do we know how many, uh, red tags were put out in Upper Canyon for all the unpermitted building up there?
Really?
That's another initiative that, uh, we're working with code enforcement to have them, um, double our resources in regard to identifying work that has been done without permits, um, in, in, in areas. Um, I think we probably got about eight, I believe, um, that they identified after we, um, and I think after we worked together, it might be closer to five or six, because some of those we'd already identified, um, as well, and some were things being done with that, um, did not need permits.
I think the feedback that I've gotten, and I'll put this just on the, the public record, if anybody watches these, um, neighbors need to inform code enforcement if there is, um, issues.
Activity.
Yeah, because they aren't gonna drive every single street and can't go up there every single day, so.
I guess the, what's the best contact number for red tag projects that you see working?
So the non, uh, the non-emergency number to dispatch.
Dispatch, okay, not emergency.
And it, and it just says, hey, there's construction going on and I didn't visibly see a permit, cause they're supposed to display the permit.
Oh, no, no, this was, this is a red tag situation where the contractor's still friggin' working and it's red tag.
That's what I was about to ask. You go put a red tag and they thumb their nose at you and they continue on, what recourse do you?
So for the longest time, I don't think there's really been any true enforcement. Um, one, because of just short, we're, we're short on resources. Um, this group, I think, is starting to move forward significantly on kind of enforcement components, so whether it's going to court, whether it's getting the judge to buy into the issues of the red tags, um, the clean and lean process, the foreclosure process, those are things we never did in the past that we're now gonna start doing.
Okay, with, with the clean and lean of the properties you've identified, say there's 20 of them, say they don't get clean and leaned, flood comes this summer and all that property winds up 300 yards downstream.
The reason we have tried to do the clean and lean process in 15 days is so that we can get this done before July 1st, um, one way or another, uh, cause that's our goal.
Well, I, well, I'm playing the worst case scenario. I mean, if you get a, whether it be a home or a partial house that washes down and takes out another house or more structure or more infrastructure, is that landowner liable for those costs?
I don't know.
It does, because I, I can't say that. All I know is that it can, it becomes a civil matter at that point.
Well, that's why I ask, good.
And Zach's not here, so, although he's sitting in Zach's seat.
He's, he's sitting in the other room listening, but, um, I, I think he is anyway.
Michael, is that gonna pertain to the overlay as well? Okay. All right.
I guess, I guess the other question, you said you've identified 20 clean and lean. I had an interesting conversation with a contractor the other day and they say there's at least 200 that have not signed up to get cleaned up. Now, I don't know where all of those are, granted, this is a foreman working on it, was cleaning all the stuff up at Brady Canyon, but I don't know where, that's a big difference between 20 and 200 and I don't, you know, that's, that's a little bit of a concern. If it is closer to 200, you're not gonna get it done by July 1st.
I would imagine they probably have the more accurate number than.
Well, you know, this guy cleaned up everything in Brady Canyon, so, you know.
I would say the number's probably closer to 60. Um, and with the contractors we have ready to go, I think we could clean up 60 in five days, based on what we've done.
Okay, no, that's fair. That's why I asked.
There's still several in Cedar Creek as well.
And those are outside of the county.
Yes, and.
Yes, well, they're only, only up to, um, just past the forest's office will our overlay get there.
Okay. Cause I know in the house, I'm trying to rebuild, I'm in the overlay and I have to get a permit through the village.
That's.
That's the MOU district, so that's building permit. Our zoning districts do not go outside of our municipal boundary.
They stay within that.
And that's why in the county, if you would, correct me if I'm wrong, I could put a manufactured home on my property in the county.
Yeah.
Because the village doesn't impact the zoning. They just say, yes, this is up to the state and national building code.
Yeah, I've gotten, I've gotten a lot of people come by the shop and screaming because they're putting manufactured homes.
I got that feedback today.
Oh, my God.
It's like, well, that's not the village.
That's outside the village.
We received a number of calls, so there's two situations that are actually happening and we're actually working with the county on the MOU right now. So the first situation is, yes, we're getting the calls about manufactured housing or homes going up. Um, we do go out and inspect. The question is whether we actually have the authority to red tag and enforce. So in the MOU, there is wording that says, yes, you can. However, per the state, there's no jurisdictional authority that I have or that the village has to actually go out and say, you have to do this. And so, um, our, our police departments and our, um, law enforcement entities were barely cross-commissioned by the state to be able to do this in the last legislative session. There's nothing that says a code enforcement officer is cross-commissioned to go out. And if, even if they were, what in fact are they enforcing? Are they enforcing a village standard because the county hasn't adopted any type of code components outside of, uh, CUD? So there is a number of issues that are starting to pop up that we're being asked to deal with that I don't think we actually have jurisdiction to, to work on. And, and so we're working through legal with that as well as, um, administratively.
They should just call their county commissioner if they have an issue in the county.
I don't have any trouble with a manufactured house as long as it looks nice. I mean, there was a lot of manufactured houses up on that mountain before it burned down.
The challenge is, is there's a fundamental difference in governance between the county and the village.
Well, let's, let's, let's put a pin in that fun discussion and.
Any other community, yeah, let's go look at the 603.
We need to adjourn here.
We do, any other comments? We do need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.[1780.16]